The Board would now come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
You have fifteen, Mr. President. You have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Elder Edmund Low Senior of AME St. Louis, Cape Girardeau, St. Louis and Cape Girardeau District. We are so blessed to have him here today and looking forward to working with him on things all throughout our community.
Let's pause. Let's respect each and every one of our religions. So, thank you Creator, Sustainer. Send now your wisdom upon these men and women that serve the community. Let them remember that in these hallowed halls, that the well-being of the people shall always be the supreme law. A duty to respect, a duty to withhold, and a duty to serve. We ask now, Sustainer and Creator, that ye will bless each and every one of them and endow them with wisdom, endow them with the foresight to look ahead, and endow them the foresight to hold on to those sacred legacies that bring us together. Send now your wisdom upon their homes, their lives, and their wards. And for the whole of our community, grant us now peace. Grant us now togetherness that only can be done by men and women that are guided by the spirit of service. We ask God that you will bless those that will visit our community. And as we open this new session of the Board of Aldermen, that the work that's done will be pleasing in the sight of you, our Sustainer and our Creator. Let's Alderman Reed that he will lead with integrity, lead with honesty, and lead us for the betterment of the whole of our community. And finally, we ask now Creator and Sustainer, that those that will seek this office will be guided by a spirit of inclusiveness and equity. We ask these things now. Amen.
Let's give the Bishop a big round of applause and thank him for coming out today. I almost didn't recognize him this morning. He's lost sixty pounds since I saw him last and is looking really good and healthy. Alderman from the Eighteenth Ward, Alderman at Eighteenth. You recognize on the motion for the temporary hiring. Line item three of Luke Golly.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move to appoint Luke Golly as a temporary clerk of the Board.
Been moved by Alderman from the Eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests, Alderman from the Twenty-Second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Alderwoman from the Thirteenth.
The Board I'd like to have as my special guest, Jeff Hans from the Carpenters Union. Thank you.
Alderman from the Seventh.
Dave Sweeney from Lewis Rice, who just stepped into the hall. Thanks.
Alderman from the Twenty-Third.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have Fred Circe from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters as my special guest.
Alderman from the Third.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have Mr. Ken Franklin and members of By State as our special guests.
Alderman from the Twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to have as my special guest Jerome Murray from the License Collector's Office and everyone up in the gallery today is my special guest. And I'd like to make the Alderwoman from the Twenty-Eighth my special guest today.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the Tenth, would you like to wrap us up?
Thank you. We're having our Joe caucus. We're trying to get Joe to change his name so we can get Ms. Oliver from Twenty-Third. Thank you, as we're gathered here again on April Seventeenth, which is tax day for you folks that haven't paid your taxes. You have till midnight tonight to get them before. Thank you. It is on this day in fourteen ninety-two that Columbus signed his deal with Spain to go find us. And it was also on this day in, put my glasses on, in nineteen seventy, Richard Nixon had Johnny Cash come to the White House to sing "A Boy Named Sue." But most importantly, this is National Blah, 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 Blah Day, otherwise known as a conversation with an Alderman from the Twenty-Third. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alderman from the Twenty-Second, you recognize on the motion for Resolution Number One.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of Resolution Number One.
It's been moved by Alderman from the Twenty-Second, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Third. Any discussion? Alderman from the First.
Mr. President, members of the Board, first of all, I have a point of order. Did we have a quorum? Because I'm looking around here. I wasn't here, so did we have one? I just wanted to know.
Yes, we did.
Okay. And second of all, if the Alderman from the Twenty-Second will yield, please?
Alderman from the Twenty-Second will yield to questions to the Alderman from the First. Please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, are there any changes from our rules that have been passed last year?
No.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the Twenty-Second, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Third that we adopt Resolution Number One. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Alderwoman from the Nineteenth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to move for this Board to go into closed session to deal with personnel-related items.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the Nineteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the Fourteenth. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderwoman Boyd. You have twenty-one aye votes, Mr. President.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the Nineteenth. We are now moving into closed session. So if you're not a member of the Board or a member of the staff of the Board of Aldermen, I'm going to ask you to exit the chambers now. I'm asking STL TV to please turn off the cameras and let us know when we are no longer broadcasting live, and then we will proceed with the meeting. In session. Alderwoman from the Nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for temporary hiring of staff. Resolution Number Two.
President, members of the Board, I move to adopt Resolution Number Two.
Moved by Alderman from the Nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We will dispense with line item seven through twenty-one. First reading of resolutions.
We have no resolutions, Mr. President.
Absolutely, we do. Outline item twenty-two.
I'm sorry, twenty-two. Resolution Number One, sponsored by President Reed and Alder Rhodey, the Board of Aldermen hereby adopts said rules of the Board of Aldermen as the rules of the Board of Aldermen for the 2018-2019 session.
Alderman from the Twenty-Second, you recognize on Resolution Number One.
And a point of order. I moved for adoption of Resolution Number One earlier.
That was a temporary, so that we can operate the Board up until the actual, and this is what we're going to do to roll calls, folks.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. President, I move for adoption of Resolution Number One.
Motion by Alderman from the Twenty-Second, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderwoman Boyd. You have twenty-one aye votes and one no vote, Mr. President.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the Twenty-Second, and adopt the resolution, the rules for the next session of Board of Aldmen.
Resolution Number Two, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy, the Board of Aldermen appoints the staff of the Board of Aldermen for the 2018-2019 session. Louis Golly, legal counsel, Lisa R. McNichols, administrative assistant, Sherri Bill, executive secretary, Tina Johnson, executive secretary, Tracy Billups, executive secretary, Michelle Knox, executive secretary, Teresa Chambers, executive secretary, Gerard Hollins Jr., financial analyst, Anita Morton, receptionist typist, Constantine Adibayo, administrative aide, vacant clerk, vacant assistant clerk, vacant executive secretary, vacant legislative researcher.
Alderman from the Eighteenth, you recognize on Resolution Number Two.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number Two.
You'd like to request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent, Mr. President.
Here are no objections. Me too. All right. You'd like to make the motion for adoption?
I move for adoption of Resolution Number Two.
Moved by Alderman from the Eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth. Any discussion? It's been a request for previous roll. There's been an objection to previous roll. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Mohammed. You have twenty-one aye votes and one present, Mr. President.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the Eighteenth, and adopt Resolution Number Two.
Resolution Number Three, sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Middlebrook, the Board of Aldermen authorizes and directs the clerk to prepare the index to the Journal of the Board for the 2018-2019 session.
Alderman from the Eighteenth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Number Three.
Yes, Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent.
Here are no objections, please proceed.
I move for adoption of Resolution Three.
Moved by Alderman from the Eighteenth, entertained the Second, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-Third and Twenty-Sixth. Any discussion? Is there a request for previous roll? There's a request, there's been an objection to previous roll. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Boyd. You have eighteen aye votes and one present, Mr. President.
By your vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the Eighteenth, and adopted Resolution Number Three. All right. Could you please repeat the?
It was twenty-one aye votes and one present, Mr. President. I'm sorry about that.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the Eighteenth, and adopt the Resolution Number Three. Resolution Number Four.
Resolution Number Four, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Rhodey, the Board of Aldermen hereby authorizes a continued payment to each Alderman and the President of the Board of Aldermen of an expense allowance in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars and the issuance of the equivalent of two hundred dollars U.S. postage stamps per month.
Alderman from the Seventeenth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Number Four.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for passage of Resolution Number Four.
What a request unanimous consent. All right, we'll just have to move to suspend the rules and all. Would you like to request unanimous?
Unanimous consent, please.
Here are no objections. Please move.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of Resolution Number Four.
It's been moved by Alderman from the Seventeenth, entertained, seconded by Alderman from the Eighteenth. Any discussion? Alderman from the Twenty-Second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would ask if the Alderman from the Seventeenth would yield for a question?
Alderman from the Seventeenth, will you yield for questions? Alderman from the Twenty-Second.
I am always glad to yield to my colleague from the Twenty-Second Ward.
Without trying to really put you on the spot or show your age or anything like that, Alderman, but how many years have you been down here?
Well, thank you for making note of that, Alderman. I have been down here for just over thirty years.
And how much was the automatic expense account when you first started?
It was exactly three hundred and fifty dollars a month.
And you're a finance wizard.
Thank you, Alderman.
Right. And so after three decades, cost of living, three hundred and fifty dollars probably doesn't provide the same amount of services today as it did thirty years ago?
Well, our salaries probably have doubled at least since I've been down here, so that would kind of put in perspective. But yeah, I would think that it would at least, the double inflation would have doubled the.
You're good. Okay, no further questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the Twenty-Eighth?
Would the Alderman from the Seventeenth yield for another question?
Alderman from the Seventeenth.
I don't know, is it going to be hard or not?
Alderman from the Twenty-Eighth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question about the postage stamps per month that we receive. And in here, it says we can receive the equivalent of two hundred U.S. postage stamps per month. And I know for a lot of us, we actually can save money by doing bulk postage as opposed to being issued individual stamps. Is there?
Alderwoman, I can tell you're relatively new. This has been, I think, hotly debated. In our Democratic Caucus, I think every, every two years.
Every set of time.
Every two years. And after about an hour or two, I think everybody is so frustrated that they just give in tradition. So that is, but if you'd like to start it again, we'll be glad to begin it here, but I would encourage you to wait till next year and you'll get probably the full dose.
Alderman to your, Alderman right to your left is the, one of the, one of the people who fight it all the time, Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth.
Well, I'm just looking at the language of it. I mean, I read it as the equivalent of two hundred U.S. postage stamps per month. I'm happy to take this up with somebody else. I don't want to hotly debate it.
Alderwoman, I'm teasing you. Hopefully, you feel it is in good natured, but it has been something that is frequently debated. I think we've concluded that we can't take that in expense account money. Is that not?
That's, that's, that's true. So, so that's why we changed it to equivalent, so that we can do bulk mail, because a lot of us want to do bulk mail opposed to, opposed to.
Well, I'm happy to follow up with this later. I just wanted to get some clarification, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman from the Twenty-Third.
We're just going to mention that we did at the caucus, and you can do bulk mail. You don't have to do the stamps, but we did discuss that.
Yep. Alderman from the Twenty-Sixth.
The bulk stamps are the worst thing we can ever do, and all respect to my colleague in the Twenty-Eighth. I know I've had some mailings I've done throughout my community with bulk stamps and, I mean, with bulk mailing, and it's very slow, it's snail mail. And if you have a resident that moved or would have or deceased, it will not be returned back. So I'm definitely against bulk mailing. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? So it's been moved by Alderman from the Seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the Eighteenth that we adopt Resolution Number Four. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. You have twenty-two aye votes, Mr. President.
Has that been conferred?
No.
Did you change Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth vote to no? And then?
You have twenty-one aye votes and one no vote.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the, from the Seventeenth, and adopted Resolution Number Four. We will dispense with line items, line item twenty-three miscellaneous unfinished business. We have none.
You have none, Mr. President.
Announcements.
We have, we, April, April, Friday, April twenty. We have, we, April, April, Friday, April 20, or no, we have no announcements. No meetings. No full board meeting on April 20th, 2018.
Okay. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I've been hearing a lot of people who have questions and things in this closed meeting. We do not have to wait every two years to have a caucus meeting.
We don't.
We can have Democratic caucus meetings if we want to, and in fact, I had just told some people that we didn't call one as a whole. I'm going to ask how many people are interested in it, because these are things that we need to have a sit-down talk about more than every two, two years or so. So if you don't have a caucus meeting, I'm going to put a note out to people saying if you want to have one, we should sit around and talk, because there's some things that, we got half of our board been here less than four years, and it's a lot of things they don't know. We should properly train that.
No, I, I, I agree, so I will call a caucus meeting.
And second thing I want to say is, at the end of May, Ollie Stewart always has a, what is it, bring it together with the seniors, and I always go, and so usually she doesn't have enough staff, and they have it in Forest Park, and so I actually will wait on the seniors and things, and it's from seniors all over the city of St. Louis. You will get a letter from me next week, because I, I'm on the planning committee, and I came up with the idea in respect for seniors, if we could have some celebrity waiters instead of them standing in line, so I'm going to invite all the members of the Board of Aldermen, and with the dates and things, and if you could, you really should do it, because it's a wonderful thing, and it really is a gathering from seniors all over the whole city of St. Louis, and we're inviting the state reps and everybody, the governor, and everybody to come and be a celebrity, a waiter or waitress, and it won't take that much of your time, and the seniors love it. I'll send.
Everybody hold it down for a second.
I'll send the date. It's at the end of May. It's that last week of May, and it's, it's really a wonderful thing.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 17th.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a rather momentous event, I think, in many of our opinions mine recently, when the Alderman from the 22nd, after much persistence, prevailed in the lawsuit that he was a plaintiff in, and I wanted to publicly congratulate him on behalf of all the city employees who will be able to breathe and sleep a little easier knowing that there's a little extra cushion in the city's budget this year. Congratulations, Alderman Boyd.
Yeah, congratulations. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? We also have directly following the board meeting there, ByState, John Nations and his staff here to give us an update on ByState, so they, they say that it's going to go pretty quickly, so directly following the meeting, when we adjourn the meeting, ByState will set up and begin giving their quick presentation. Alderwoman from the 19th.
I just want to add to that. I want to add to that, Mr. President, because we've had a lot of rhetoric out in our social media of misunderstandings of the new opportunities that'll be available with Metro. This is the perfect opportunity for all the Aldermen to get direct information and speak to those who are making those decisions, so that we know that we're going in the right direction to help our constituency.
Yes, and one of the things I want to make sure we note, this update from ByState is being sponsored by the Chairman of Transportation and Commerce, Alderwoman Davis, to assure that on transportation-related issues, the entire board gets a good debriefing on what's going on. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the alderperson from the 2nd, 5th, 6th, 15th, and 27th be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, and taken the second, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, April 27th, 10 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.